Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our May 1st Board of Education meeting. Glad to have you all here this evening. This evening, before we start, I just want to alert you that we don't have the special music that we normally would have to sing the anthem or play the anthem. Unfortunately, that group has another commitment elsewhere, and so they're sharing their talents elsewhere, and so we will just do the plays. So if everybody will rise for the plays. The first item on the agenda is a moment of silence for Martin Seder, who's a business teacher at Bristol Eastern and Central from September 5th of '67 to 1/11 of '01. I'd also like to add Sheila Kelly, who is the wife of our city council liaison, Peter Kelly, who passed away this weekend after a brief illness. Our next item is staff and student recognition. Superintendent will lead us there.
Good evening, commissioners. We have many students to praise this evening, the first of which would be a group of students who are being honored at the Connecticut Association of Boys of Education Student Leadership Awards. These students have met some criteria, including their willingness to take on challenges, their capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to projects, diplomacy, and the ability to understand issues clearly, as well as to honor their commitments. These students have been asked, Julie Nelson, to join me. From Bristol Central High School, David Gao. And Kiara Suazo. From Bristol Eastern, Emily Belanger. From Chickens Hill Middle School, Bushpita Rosan. Also from Chickens Hill, Julia Armenton. From Northeast Middle School, Clinton Bartley. And Alyssa Adorna. From Green Hill School, Fatima Amir. And Joshua Charette. From West Bristol School, Christopher Warren. And Rachel Wigan. So these are our future leaders. Congratulations to all of you. A great photo op. Next, I would like to recognize Bristol Central Senior for, actually, I'm missing a nomination. Stanley Cardama. Stanley is honored as the Bristol Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. He is also the Bristol Exchange Club 2019 Accepting the Challenge of Excellence Award winner. He's also been honored as the Connecticut This Week Exchange Club winner as well, and in the competition for the National Award from the Exchange Clubs of the United States. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to have Paige Zillen, who's right here, who is an eighth grader at Chickens Hill Middle School, and he's involved in the Kids in the Middle Program, and he was honored by the United Way at their annual recognition event. And I was remiss, so is this Patrick here? I guess so. See, I was supposed to take my picture at the end of that evening, and I left before we did that, so we have some business to take care of here. Because I believe you want the screen with a certain onpatient. Am I heard? Congratulations. Do we have Mrs. M. Biggin alone? This is Monica Genoyah, who is a Latin teacher at Bristol Central, has some really special news.
I sure do. So, good evening, Superintendent and Commissioners and gentlemen. In my 31-year teaching career, I have only had six students in total score a perfect paper on the National Latin exam until this year. There were about 140,000 students across the world who took the National Latin exam. It's still called the National Latin exam because when it was founded in 1976, it was only in the United States. But out of the 140,000 students across the world who took the National Latin exam, three of them from Bristol Central High School scored perfect papers, and I've seen at least two of them in the audience tonight, and there's one I haven't seen. It's your son, Gabriel.
He's been sick. Did you slip it?
There you are. So I follow up on my age. The first of the three, so I went from six to nine now with perfect papers. The first of the three is our senior, Corinna Marsh. So the students will receive hand lettered certificates of merit from the American Classical League, but they won't be here until the end of the month because they are hand lettered. The second of the three is junior Nadine Maceda. And Commissioner Taylor, I think you know the third one. Freshmen, freshman Latin ones who know a Taylor. I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to honor my students for this impressive achievement on the National Latin exam this year, and I want to clap for myself.
However, it takes a great teacher to get great results from their students. So we have to thank Mrs. Monica Genoyah for the fabulous job she does teaching Latin.
Our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We received those minutes in the Capitol, we received them in the weekend. Does anybody have any corrections or modifications to minutes? No corrections? I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, second.
Second.
Motion to properly rate and segment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions.
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 Who's that?
Three.
We'll now move to committee reports. Mr. By and personnel will lead us off.
Well, personnel committee met, and with the help of the administration, we've identified two people who will be receiving staff awards at our May dinner, and they'll be here at the June meeting to be recognized. So I will break the suspense by announcing them tonight.
That's good. Appreciate your discipline.
My strong point.
Yes. Well, next move to student achievement. Commissioner Gubbe.
Hi, yes, so the student achievement committee. The student achievement committee meeting was on Wednesday, April 19th, and we discussed a few things. We had information processing curriculum that was impressive. We had a sports and entertainment marketing curriculum course reading, and we also discussed the Memorial Boulevard, Central District Arts Magnet School program. Say that three times fast, maybe. There you go.
Now move on to communications.
Oh, sorry. That's it.
Okay, communications and community relations, Commissioner Gagian.
On April 10th, we met, and the two main discussion topics were the spring newsletter. We are moving forward with the spring newsletter, and unfortunately, the school probably need a little more help from the schools to make sure that we can continue getting information in. Are we doing well, fact? Do we have time? Good. So that will be out very soon. The other conversation that we had at this meeting was about the community conversation that we started earlier this year, and we will be continuing. I'm sure this will be talked about a little bit more in the meeting as well, but May 30th will be the date of the next community conversation, and I won't steal this from you later reports, but we hope to have another nice large round to make it.
Yeah, next committee report will be finance. Commissioner Gubbe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are currently looking at a deficit as we close out the year. It's based on transportation, special education, and magnet tuition. I'm going to ask Mrs. Brown if she wants to come up with some details. I will say that food services budget, we are, we're doing okay. We're in the black at the moment.
Thank you. Good evening. I did want to start and just take a quick minute to review the summary sheet that we give, just because I have some questions that I received from both our board and some of our members of the board trying to fill this city. The focus of the summary sheet, remember this is just a snapshot taken at the end of each month, this is not the end of the year forecast, and it's entirely to be misinterpreted. This latest snapshot that we gave at the full board meeting, this is as of March 31st. The first time that this report was given is the third Monday, all right? So that's going to the committee of finance subcommittee. The next day, it's sent on to the city for their board of finance meeting, and then we review it one last time during the full board session. At the close of March, we were running a deficit of negative 1.158 million. For comparison, at this time last year, we also were running a deficit, but it was 352,000. So this is a very different picture this year. As condition of the work set, that is due to overages in the area of transportation, which is currently over by 165,000. Magnet tuition is over by 252,000, and special education continues to run a deficit of 2.374 million. The special education deficit did increase, 170,000 in the month of March, and again, this fluctuates as student service requirements change and other students continue to join the district. Overall, even for those areas, the pressure does remain steady, and we continue the forecast that we will have approximately $1.1 million in the teacher salary line available to mitigate the deficit in special education. And again, the reason we have those funds is we like to make sure we're not retiring, and we do not fill five provisions, and any of those plans, knowing that we have this deficit to meet. We have issued a directive, but all requisition, all requisitions we entered by April 18th. Anything that is still to be requisitioned has been encumbered, and it was only for empty year awards and such to finish the year. We've also directed that all requisitions be closed by May 10th, and again, if there's anything outside of federal states, they have to inform us, and we will not have shipped about that this year, because we want to get as accurate of a forecast as we can. At this time, with the end of the third quarter review forecast, an overall deficit, we've given a range between 800,000 and 1.2 million, and continue to pull in on that with the G-Board if needed. General needs report and transfers, and I ask question of the committee in the cafeteria in Port Royal at this time. We expect that the administrative review will come in by the end of this month, because maybe this is from the school actually, by the service director, that they are expected on the 30th or 31st of May, and so hopefully our six cents per million reimbursement will be back for the month of June. Any questions?
I think the committee is operations. Commissioner Gubbe is way down.
Pinced, yes.
Pinced, sorry. How many times have I made that mistake over the last few years?
Two or three. Thank you, Chairman Wilson. Operations committee met on April 16th, and we considered two matters. First, a group of enthusiastic Harvard parents from Bristol Eastern High School came to us with a proposal to make some improvements to the girls' softball field and the boys' baseball field, dugouts on each field, and some new fencing that would improve gameplay. This, the anticipated cost of this project is going to be over $100,000. They were asking for permission from the board to be able to begin fundraising for that project. We steered them to our professional staff, Tim Callahan, Pete Fusco, and Chris Cassin, to help guide them through the process, and we gave them permission to fundraise for the initial $25,000 for site planning and fencing. And once they work through all the approvals and permissions and get a firmer plan, we'll consider the new plans and let them continue. Then we added seventh school to the community eligibility provision, Bristol Central High School, for the 2019-2020 school year. All students will be eligible for free breakfast on March. That program has been critical to the elimination of the six-figure deficit that we've experienced in the food service budget in the past.
Thank you very much. And I don't believe we have policy. I think you guys sacrificed this month so that we could meet with the board of finance. We appreciate your sacrifice, and I'm sure we'll hear from you next month. We'll move right on to my report. When we first, and I'm not going to talk too long, I'm going to shoot this over to my Dr. Dieter in a second, but I just wanted to highlight some of the things that are going on at the Capitol. We've just gone through sort of a dormant period of time where the Capitol was not meeting much, but now they're starting to get to the nitty gritty and getting down to appropriations and coming up with the revenues and seeing if the revenues match the appropriations. Yesterday, the appropriations committee came out with their own budget, which is a little bit different than the governor's budget. It was in committee, it was only supported by one side of the caucus, the other side did not support it. So now there'll be some conversation back and forth between the governor's people and, you know, the appropriations committee to see where they're different. Basically, the governor wanted to, they changed the funding formula for ECS, and they built it on an eight-year phase-in to be fully funded after eight years. The governor wanted to do it in four years, and the appropriation committee has gone back and said, "We'd like to keep it on its regular schedule that was planned on." So those two parties will negotiate and come up with a solution, hopefully in the next few weeks, and so that everybody will know what we're going to be receiving. Ironically, even though the appropriation committee gave more money to the excess cost grant, Bristol somehow got less money on the appropriation runs that I saw, so I really didn't understand the logic behind that.
Some of it was the impact aid that we had for disaster students that was taken out of that number.
Because the runs I saw were less, but I don't want to deliberate too long on that. We'll follow it as it goes along over the next month. I'm turning it over now to Dr. Gear to give us an update on the Memorial Boulevard, Central District Magnet School.
Good evening, commissioners. The Memorial Boulevard, Central District Arts and Magnet School Building Committee continues to meet. We've met two times this past month. We continue that schedule and don't put a change on that in the future. We've had the pleasure of viewing some preliminary drawings, whole schematic, and exterior design. We provided the architects with feedback coming with the program committee, so they did make some adjustments and shared that information with us. Right now, the work does seem to be focusing with the opposite school grants, construction review, as well as the SHPO, which is the opposite state historic preservation. A lot of conversation to do regarding the entryway, as well as some of the historic features of the building, primarily the year. The construction managers, as well as architects, report that the project is progressing within the expected timelines. These are anticipating environmental studies reports to be available soon, which will then inform the next steps if we drive to any remediation or maintenance that are within the building, as well as on the site. We encourage public participation. I want to share with you that our next meeting will be May 9th at 6:30 and May 36th, as well as a reminder, as mentioned today, is our way of the student achievement committee. Also, this is an opportunity for the public to hear about the programming aspects of the Memorial Boulevard project, and that next meeting is scheduled for June 10th. We'd be happy to answer any specific questions that may happen.
If you don't mind, I'll just add that the program committee did come out with an FAQ, frequently asked questions, and I don't believe it's up on the site yet, but Dr. Dieter before this meeting, and he's going to make sure that it gets up on the site, but it does talk about sort of some of the common questions people are asking about, what will the pathways look like, and some other questions about how the lottery will work. It's very basic at this point. They've created these pathways, these six pathways, but now it'll be up to the administration to create the curriculum behind these pathways over the next 12 to 18 months, and so they'll flesh some more bones onto that, frequently asked questions, but it's a first shot at so we can give the community an idea of what's being planned thus far.
There'll be more information coming from the program committee. I don't want to steal the support that's under, but we are technically looking at the first part of June to provide a form for the community to come in and to look at some of the drawings, as well as share some of the recent thinking and plans that go around pathways and equipment. So we'll provide you with more information once we finalize that.
All righty, now we're up to student representative reports, and who's speaking first tonight?
Good evening, secretary of the room, Secretary Cardama, Secretary of the Gallery of Commissioners. On November 15th, Eastern had a purple update to recognize the students who have parents in the world care. All at Eastern were asked to wear purple and decide when they're at their launch. Any children, including faculty, whose parents served, will bear a name of purple. Everyone else signed in other colors for support. This was an important day for Eastern as we appreciated the sacrifice made by military families. It was also a way for our school to show our encouragement for students who are pursuing military careers. Thank you to all who have served in world care. As we know, colleges love to see students showing themselves, and this happened under the goal Eastern tries to provide all students. Many of our students have taken numerous advanced placement classes and are preparing for our upcoming AP test, which will take place from May 6th to May 17th. The time period between now and the end of AP tests are extremely difficult and stressful for students. We hope to succeed and score a three or better. Luckily at Eastern, there are teachers of new genre and AP test teachers who offer her own time to stay up there and help students in need to help us clear way. Teachers and students have been trying to put in stress to help reduce the stress during the time period of long shots of making individual AP class memberships. Despite the stress and pressure, many of our seniors are excited and prepared for graduation, which shall be held on December 1st, which shall be the beginning of all our new ventures. On May 3rd, there will be a conference field trip for any current seniors and juniors who are interested in pursuing their education at U N College. On May 15th, Eastern will be held at its 33rd annual academic honor banquet for students who are in the top 10% of their class. These students have succeeded academically at Eastern and will be recognized for their achievement by our school, Dr. Kelly, Roger, and others. On May 20th, there will be an ECD and AP class presentation for all students who are interested in taking any of these courses. Information regarding these individual classes will be distributed and explained during the presentation. On May 30th, SAT carnival for juniors will be held during lunch period as an award for the high participation rate of 97% during the school SAT day. Juniors are looking forward to this. Through the month of May and June, Eastern will be hosting numerous exciting events. Our students and teachers put effort into their work and accurate quality to come and see. This weekend, the Eastern Theater Art presents Susie Cole, the musical. They're excited to take audience through a journey of Jojo's imagination with a cat in the hat played by Oren, Corrin the Alfin, Macy, Duck, Detrou, the Wickersham, and Mr. Mayor and Miss Mayor. This amazing show is directed by Berastuk Begon, produced by Elizabeth Podolsky, and musically directed by Kenneth Bagley. They have done outstanding jobs with the production. This show is on May 3rd at 7:00 p.m., May 4th at 2:00 and 7:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased at the door, $10 or $10 for two, and children $5 and under $5. Please come to show your support. We will be happy to see you there. On May 10th, there will be a jazz concert at 7:00 p.m. in the Autocar. On May 30th, there will be a screen concert for both chorus and band at 7:00 p.m. in the Autocar. On June 6th, there will be a possible theater performance in the Autocar, and I will inform you all the time I have next week. I hope you can come and see one of these performances, especially supporting our department seats. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners of the Board. My name is Abby, and I'm the student representative for Bristol Central. I hope everyone's feeling very comfortable, warm, fun, and relaxed. With the school year coming to a closing graduation, just around the corner, there are many exciting upcoming events and interesting events. As of today, May 3rd, seniors have to pay the deposit for their children college and find a permit. I am very, very proud and excited to say that I committed to UConn and that I am officially a Husky, where I will be following the preman track of the hope of becoming an ultrasound technician or a pediatrician, well, at least right now, because there are multiple careers in the medical field that I am familiar with. Since graduation is near, the scholarships that are available are now reaching my deadlines. Last week in April, Central's talented performance arts students played in a screenplay, "Lately Gone and Easy," which was extremely comical. It was held on April 5th, 6th, and 7th. Next week, starting on May 6th, some students will be taking their AP exam until May 17th. All of these two weeks are judged by the majority of students, and the two of these two weeks is a junior and senior prom. Junior prom will be held on May 1st at 7:00 p.m. and a mahogany game, senior prom. Our mahjong today game, senior prom will be held on May 17th at 7:00 P.M. on the October, which I am extremely excited about. This Saturday, May 4th, some of our talented junior boys will be competing for the title of the Mr. PCHS at the Mr. PCHS Project. The boys will be practicing their group dances, talents, getting sponsors, and making videos in March. From what I have already witnessed, the show will be a hilarious event. The money that is raised from that night will be given to charities. The charities that were chosen are the Leukemia and Enformers Society, Make-A-Wish Foundation, and the Boys and Girls Club. In the 10th donation made to charities, as a result of the National Arts Society's cultural tournament in March, $552 was donated to the state mental health department. While I was typing this report, I realized that this would be my last time speaking at these meetings and standing in front of this podium. Although I started this at the very beginning of the year, I feel like the time went by even in the middle of the night. I would like to take a moment and thank everyone here for not only giving me, but everyone having the opportunity to be a student representative and have a voice. I am very honored to be given this opportunity and it has given me so much confidence this weekend and even today. Thank you so much again. Have a wonderful day.
So Huskies.
Catherine, I see that you have a paper. Do you want to speak to it?
This is beautiful.
Oh, okay. You know, are you coming back next month, Laura? Are you? Okay, so Abby, we just want to say how much we appreciate you sharing your gift with us over these last months. We appreciate hearing the student voice. I think it's very beneficial for us, the board, to hear what students are thinking since you're the consumers, knowing the decisions that we make. So we appreciate it so much. And I'll give you the comment that I've given to all the student representatives who have served in the past, is we hope that you come back and visit us and come and speak at Public Comment sometime and tell us how your experience is at UConn and tell us how, you know, the school system, to be honest, how the school system prepared you or didn't prepare you, and tell us how you're surviving and thriving in college. So please, you know, take us up on that offer and we'd love to see you again. Catherine, you're back for next year?
Yes.
Oh, awesome, awesome. Okay, so I'll save any more remarks for next month. Okay, thank you. And now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And we will be soliciting applications for our Eastern student rec for next year and then June, well, rising juniors at both high schools. Because having an example of, you know, watching the senior, I think has been very beneficial. We'd like to continue with that. My first bit of information is a budget update. Not all of the commissioners were at the Board of Finance meetings, so I thought I would fill you in. As you know, we had a request of 119, almost 120 million dollars. Some adjustments were made to that in part because of the increase in ECS, which is really an Alliance District increase that was then deducted from our budget, and a change in health insurance costs. So we have a revised budget. And then we have the amount that the Board of Finance approved. So we have $3.7 million in pending reductions. We're going to make our recommendations to the Finance Committee when they meet on May 11th. And we will be meeting right after the joint board meeting, if that is not postponed, depending on what happens with the state budget. It's our monthly update on our district priorities. In the area of inspiring and cultivating talent, we are hiring for next year. We're posting vacancies of positions that we know that we can fill. And our administrators will be using the hiring manual that Dr. Galloway created with lots of different kinds of questions, checklist of things that need to be followed in terms of seeking out candidates. And as always, we're always looking for as diverse and highly qualified a workforce as we can possibly get in our teaching center. This morning, the district community improvement team met and they were analyzing some, a rubric for teacher evaluation using the Connecticut Core Standards. They gave feedback and I completely felt that it was pretty darn good. And Mrs. Vassar, Chair of that committee, they've done a lot of work this year. We also reviewed the professional development learning plan for next year, which includes the August professional development, as well as November, and some of the extended days that we approved as well. Very well organized and I, the credit goes to the Office of Teaching and Learning Supervisors under Mrs. Forten's direction. And we're all working on closing out evaluations of teachers and administrators and that'll be going on for the next four to six weeks. I want to give you an example of, I gave you these broad highlights. But this is something that we looked at today. If you look across the top, you'll see three of the areas of district priority. And underneath them, you're going to see some of the work that's happening within each of those areas. And so this was something that was refined this morning in the district community improvement team meeting. So you can see, we have the chairs of each of those committees at the top. And then they're divided up into whatever the committee title is and then the work that they're going to be completing ongoing. And this will be further delineated as time goes on. So you're only getting a little snapshot, but there's a lot of work, layers and layers, that are underneath those general headings. In the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, there is a group, the BOE name, Dr. Carbone, which stands for, she's spearheading this group.
Building our enthusiasm.
Building our enthusiasm. And we've had several town hall meetings with the staff in this building to really highlight, and we actually do the same exact thing here, but we tell them the work each of the departments has done and how they contributed to the work of the whole district. Because this is kind of the silent group here at the Board of Ed building as opposed to the folks in the schools. So we shared a cultural potluck luncheon, which was loads of fun, and we paid to dress down and that money is going to Chapter 126 Oak Hill, over on Upson Street this month. Last month, it was at Gopé House. So every time we do one of these, we have a dress down date and we raise funds for local groups, particularly in this neighborhood, is really what we've focused on. We're finding the cameras that have, and security equipment that's been put in place, a couple of pings, but a lot of money was put in. And this was one of the most strategically shared plans with the city that we've ever engaged in in terms of IT. So the city has the same cameras that we do and so everybody understands how they work and lots of cross-training. Budget reductions that we're going to be proposing, as always, will have the lowest impact on students. But when you need to reduce the amount we're talking about, there's going to be impact. And I can't emphasize that enough. We're also working on improving our data systems for teachers so that they can freely enter and analyze their data more efficiently than they're doing right now. Community engagement and partnerships, we've got a lot on here. As Commissioner Caggiello said, we're working on planning the next community conversation. There are two trainings. The folks who are going to train have been invited. They are the folks who were training last time, so they had an initial understanding of the work. And the May event will be on May 30th. And yet to be determined location.
Bristol Central.
Bristol Central? Oh, okay. The location hasn't been determined. The mentors who work with our students in our schools are really special people. They come from business, as well as some retirees, who give a half an hour to an hour a week to one of our students and become a special friend. We thank them annually and that luncheon is at Meechus on May 22nd. We have posted the position for our reframed community engagement communications and grant program manager position. And we're hoping to get a high level of expertise out of this person who can communicate on our behalf, as well as look for grant opportunities and write grants. So those are some skill sets that not everybody has. The Bristol Tramps made a $1,000 contributions to our Unified Sports Program, which is awesome. This is a program that pairs our regular ed and special ed students on the athletic field. We also have a Unified Theater, which does the same. Through the generosity of the city in the 10-year capital plan, money has been set aside, $150,000 in total, to help with the fundraising that's been going on to expand or totally recreate the playgrounds at Southside, Stafford, Hubble, and Mountain View schools. That is really hard to raise the kind of money it takes to build a playground. And the new schools, now they're seven years old, those playgrounds at Green Hills and West Bristol were over $100,000 each. That is a hefty bowl of money arising when you're trying to raise that kind of money. And the Special Services Department is participating in a panel discussion for a parent symposium. Three Hill Major, Jayden Prama, and Dr. Peter and some of his staff will be showcased in that. Because we, as you know, make a lot of efforts to make sure that our parents are engaged in what we do with their children in the special services role. One of your focus, recently, some of you may have attended some of the invention conventions. The Citywide winners were at Mountain View a couple of weeks ago and they'll be going to the state convention. And our male school robotics challenge was held on the Thursday before our spring break and yet the room was packed. It was another amazing effort by all of our technology teachers who coached these teams, as well as a number of people from our business community who annually come out and serve as judges. Loads of fun. During the month of June, May and June, I looked at my calendar. I don't know that there's a ninth grade until June 14th. It's a straight through, very exciting time because we're recognizing the achievements and talents and efforts of our kids and that's all good. And that's my question.
And next I have agenda is the Consent agenda, which is items A1, B2. Does anybody wish to hold out any items in the Consent agenda? Anybody wish to hold out any items in the Consent agenda? Now I believe you're ready to have a motion, so I would like to turn a motion to approve the Consent agenda.
Yes.
That's properly made by Commissioner Dubby. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Taylor. I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I can see that.
Do we have any public comment? We now move correctly with deliberate items. And first item up, I believe, Dr. Galloway with our quarterly enrollment notice.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll take the suspense out of this report by saying that the overall change in regard to student enrollment is 37 students, fewer than actually. So this is our snapshot of where we are with students right now, April 21st. Going back a year ago, the report has really changed by 37 students overall. So if we go look at, and I have to say that the sections at this point of the year are stable. There's a lot of movement in the beginning part of the year with students coming in and out, but I think we're stable for this last month and change that we have left. So I'll quickly go through Edgewood. You can see the section numbers there. Sections are five, no issues. Hubble, sections are all within the guidelines as described by the board. Not a lot of movement in Hubble at this point. Green Hills, you know, like grade five, the sections are within the guidelines, but the numbers are up there a little bit. Ivy Drive, stable. Not a lot of movement. The same with Mountain View and Southside. I'll pause there. Any questions on the first page? Moving on to Stafford, stable as well. And I'll pause just for a moment with West Bristol. Commissioner, I could hear your voice over the last few days about the five sides in the eighth grade level specifically. I did speak with Principal Vassar and they will not have that issue next year. They've quite frankly tightened the requirements to gain access to that, so we will not endure large numbers in those upper grades that this year. Question. Any questions on this next page with Stafford or West Bristol?
So is it safe to assume if we look at the kindergarten numbers that they'll offset the fifth grade as they move on? So that the reductions next year would be more significant? Or is there such movement throughout the summer that that doesn't have an impact?
My opinion is it doesn't have an impact. We do realize a lot of movement over the summer and then a huge rush in August. We know the rush is coming sometimes and we don't know how significant it will be.
You mean it just looks like kindergarten having 500 and 400 by both sides by last of August? But Bristol's 580, is that pretty consistent?
Yes. And I think we're, right now with kindergarten registration, we're in the 300s so far.
And that's with all the children's and the community programs, as well as our pre-K being accounted for.
Right. I'm moving on to the page with Chippin, Green Hills, Long East, and West Bristol. The only comment I had about that, I've spoken about what will happen at West Bristol next year. And if you look at the two high schools, we had a conversation with our registrar in regard to the larger numbers at Bristol Central. So it's our anecdotal feeling that that shift of 100 or so students is due to the housing on the side. We can't pin it down to anything other than that. So we had a long conversation with, you know, what's happening there. So that's our opinion at this point.
We also have 695 eighth graders going into the ninth grade next year. It's the largest cohort we've ever had in recent years.
So that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we're 37 fewer students from this time last year. And at that point, I will pause for any questions on this page with middle school, high school, magnet schools, or anything that's on this page.
Anybody have any questions? In terms of full transparency, I emailed Dr. Galloway some questions earlier in the week. I didn't want to play gotcha with him, but I did have some questions for him, so I wanted him to be prepared.
I do appreciate that.
I'm sure you do. And one of the questions I asked him was, would he attribute the loss of 77 magnet school students to? And I thought I'd let him explain his answer.
So because now all of our information is followed through centralized registration, the two ladies who work down there, it's not that we lost students per se, it's that they are able to now scrub the data and actually remove students who shouldn't be in our power school roles. So they are calling schools to follow up, to find out if kids are there. They're calling families, actually find out if families have moved out of town. Let me say that there's no negative financial impact on those numbers. So for the magnet school students, we pay tuition, that is verified. So I don't want you to think that, you know, they were, you know, money was being expended and that it wasn't accounted for. Really, the students are in the heart of magnet schools where you can lose track of because it's hard to tell parents or you have to go back to Bristol. Many parents don't see that as a necessity when they've already moved on. So the ladies down there in the downtime will call schools and will call, follow up with parents to find out where they're living. So that's kind of the data scrub right there. So that's kind of the data scrub right there.
So the other question I asked him was about the magnet students, and as you know, we don't pay for students that go to the Hartford school system. As part statute, we cannot, they do not charge us. But the RESC, when our students go to RESC, we pay whatever the per pupil expenditure that they bill to us. It ranges anywhere from about $4,000 per student up to about $6,000 per student, depending on the school and where it's located. So that's why we're spending just short of a million dollars on magnet students that are ours that go to these magnet schools. And it used to be the thought back in the day that ECS covered what your magnet school tuitions were, how much you get per student. We get about $5,000 per student from ECS, so it was always kind of like a trade-off. But now the delta has sort of shifted over so that the cost of these magnet students is greater than what we receive in ECS reimbursement from the state. So I think most of us that lobby at the state or try to talk to legislators want to make them aware of that, that those students are there. And then I thought the numbers, I asked Dr. Galloway some other questions about other students, like how many students do we have in our technical high schools throughout the state? Now, we don't pay anything for those students when they go, but I was quite surprised at how many students we have at the technical high schools, so I'll let you share, so you get the credit.
Sure. Well, thanks again for that heads up, so I can shine a little bit here. Prince Tech, two, Wilcox Tech, one, B.C. Goodwin, 138, Kner Tech, five. That's who we have out.
So I think a lot of times when the business community is talking about it's more of our students need to be working in the trades, I think they are working in the trades, they're just opting to go to the trade schools as opposed to going to our comprehensive high school.
That's correct.
And I think those are my questions for today. The rest of them you answer for me, and I appreciate you, you're going to do it.
Okay, one more problem. Any other questions? Great, thank you for the time.
Our next item is the teen mentors cooperative teachers application applicants. So I see, it's weren't getting up, so she must be in the middle.
Yeah, so pretty good, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity for me to present to you the applicant that we have to be teen mentors in next full year. So in alignment with the Connecticut teacher education and mentoring program, Bristol provides every beginning teacher a mentor who has been identified through the selection process as being effective instructional and effective in guiding the pedagogy of peers. The teachers selected as teen mentors attend an initial three-day training and attend annual training the year later after. When we assign mentors, we look to assign teen-trained mentors within the same school as the beginning teachers, so they have that go-to person within their school. Thus, each year, we look to build our pool of teen-trained mentors to allow that opportunity to happen in the fall. In the fall, once we have all of our positions filled and mentors have been assigned to each beginning teacher, I'll be coming to you again to approve the hire of those teen-trained mentors as a mentor for the following school year. So this is for the approval to send them to move forward in the process of training, and then we'll bring the actual mentors, the examples who we have as beginning teachers across the district again in the fall. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval to move forward in selecting these five teachers to be trained as teen mentors.
So we'll make a motion to approve the five recommended teachers. And the motion is made by Commissioner Hens, and then seconded by Commissioner Doobie. So any questions or comments? If not, my senses ready to vote. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Porter. We'll now move on to, who's taking this one?
I'm going to do the next two.
Okay. Dr. Moro will do the next two, to replace underground storage tanks at the two high schools and all that.
Yeah, each of these were, are part of the capital plan for the city, 16, 17, and 17, 18. The state is now going to give us some reimbursement for these. Where in the past, they had to be totally funded through local dollars. So for Bristol Central High School, we have a resolution resolved at the Board of Education with final plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated 4/2219, and professional cost estimate dated 4/2219, for the Bristol Central Underground Storage Tank Removal located at 48 Vol. Road in Bristol, Connecticut. When we approve these, we then go out to bid. So I recommend approval.
Okay, this is a resolution, so you all have to do individual vote?
Yes.
So someone offer up this resolution that was just read?
Sure.
Commissioner Bibber is going to offer that, and who is going to second it?
Second.
Second side. Commissioner Grubowski is seconding. Any questions? I think not any, and we'll let the secretary call the rule.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Grubowski?
Yes.
Question together?
Yes.
Commissioner Bibber?
Yes.
Commissioner Cagliano?
Yes.
Commissioner Doobie?
Yes.
Commissioner Dantoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Dantoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
The resolution is passed. If there's any doubt.
I just called you here, sorry.
Oh, yes. I didn't.
And so the next resolution is resolved that the Board of Education will file plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated 4/2219, and the professional cost estimate dated 4/2219, for the Bristol Eastern Underground Storage Tank Removal located at 632 K Street, Bristol, Connecticut.
Second. The resolution is properly moved and seconded by Commissioner Cagliano, or who seconded?
Christian Jane.
Oh, just Christian Jane.
I'm sorry, it's the first.
Yeah.
So you can call the rule if you would.
Commissioner Cagliano?
Yes.
Commissioner Doobie?
Yes.
Commissioner Dantoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Grubowski?
Yes.
Herrins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bibber?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now move to the revision of curriculum. And our first item up is Information Processing II. First reading was performed in the Student Achievement Committee, so it's before you with the second reading.
So good evening. I'm here to just reiterate that the Information Processing II was revised recently, but previous right was in 2009. So this was, you're meeting software changes really. This curriculum will provide our students with the opportunity to take the Microsoft Suite certification, which will be about, that certificate about the real world. I'm asking at this time for a motion to finalize this curriculum. Thank you for having me.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by Commissioner Doobie, seconded by Commissioner Dantoni. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
All right, the second curriculum that I am presenting tonight is Sports and Entertainment Marketing. This is a brand new course that was written this school year, and this is a great opportunity for our students to complete a full credit in marketing in our CTE pathway. So at this point, I would also ask the Board to motion to approve this curriculum.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Doobie made the motion, and Commissioner Taylor made the second. Again, any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We're now down to textbooks. And just as some background information, by my understanding, we want to waive the second reading on this, so later on we'll take that motion, but I just want to give you some background. They have the opportunity to buy some textbooks so that they can have them ready for next year, and also take advantage of some pricing that they can do before the end of the year. So that's why we'll be asking you for waiving the second reading so that you can prove it to your administration the afternoon you get the books in house. So go ahead.
I have the texts with me, if anybody wants to bring them to us. So the first course is our Information Processing II, which is part of our Business and Finance Cluster and meets the pathway towards information technology. The textbook rationale for us is that we are looking to provide guidance for students to work at their own pace. This, the text that we are looking for had to have step-by-step instructions that related to the Microsoft Office Suite. They had to provide hands-on opportunities with authentic, real-world issues or problems to solve within the Microsoft Office development. And we wanted to make sure that our text had the assessment that was going to lead towards that Microsoft Office Suite certification. The textbook selection process, there were four texts that were, that were graded on our rubric, and the top, you can see the rubric scores of all four of those texts. The highest rubric score is the text that we selected, and the text is a series of texts, which are actually three books that come with it. The selected series was called Learn by Doing, Microsoft Office Specialist 2016. The attributes of this text are that they are consistent, easy to read page layouts, they're allowing for self-guided access to a Microsoft Suite content, there's visual format with screenshots to support student access to skill and context, and real-world and scenario-based activities for students. If you would like to have a preview of what that looks like, your video, or I can move on, I'll introduce. You're on? Okay. The textbook funding source will be the Bristol budget. This was provided for last year in our regrouping process. The total cost for the adoption of this textbook will be $9,512 and 39 cents. Is mine over?
Okay, so the first motion that will be down on the floor is waiving the second reading for the acquisition of this Information Processing II textbook. So, and it's been properly made, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and seconded by Commissioner Grubowski. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes for the waiver. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the acquisition of the Information Processing II textbooks as presented. So Joe Roski made the motion, we have a second. Commissioner Doobie, any comments? Questions? Something none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
All right. That brings us to Sports and Entertainment Marketing, which is still within our Business and Finance Cluster, our CTE pathways. Mountain View just happens to be in the marketing. The textbook need for this course is, this course was written to be case study based. Our students will have the opportunity, hopefully, to work with the SBN. I reached out with that, reached out to them to make that connection. But I needed to find a text that provided additional case studies to support marketing in the entertainment field and sports field. I also need a text that provides hands-on opportunities for students and to engage in marketing activities and to connect with student interest and motivating learners. There is one text on the market for sports and entertainment, and it happens to be the best one. It was really good. So we had a total rubric score of 52, so we met our needs. You can see that the book itself is outlined very well and clear for student understanding. There are learning objectives, key vocabulary and terms, and one of my favorite components is that there's an engagement activity that connects to the real world, which is then used as a case study to anchor all of the marketed learning. So the attributes for this text is that it's, again, consistent and easy to read, there are visual formats that support student access to skill and content, real-world and scenario-based activities, case studies for authentic application of content, real learning objectives, and application of academic vocabulary, and engaging and be placed into learning. This, because it is a new curriculum and a new course, it is, in our CTE pathway, it is covered through the curriculum's grant. This is our one-time opportunity to get that text for built. So this is at a total cost of $9,520.
And I presume you want to waive the second reading again?
Or would like to waive that as well, so that we can get these order made again.
Okay, so you all got the drill about the waivers, so I won't go through all that again. So I would entertain a motion for a waiver of the second reading on the acquisition of the Sports and Entertainment Marketing textbook. So move, do we have a second?
Second.
The second motion is made by Commissioner Doobie, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries for the waiver. Now we would have a motion to approve the purchase and acquisition of the Sports and Entertainment Marketing textbook. Someone make that motion. So move. Commissioner Dantoni made the motion, and Doobie has a second. Tom O'Brien. Commissioner O'Brien, the second motion. Boy. Boy. I don't think you have any questions or comments on this, based on your previous comments, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you doing World History?
I am not doing World History. So we don't need a waiver of the second reading because it is the second reading. I remember that Mrs. McKee presented along with me the World History textbook. We did have a few commissioners in interviewing time to go look at the textbook, so I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, then we're looking for a motion to approve that textbook.
That we can move forward with that purchase.
I just have one quick question. At the subcommittee meeting, there was a presentation piece about the interactive tools that come with the textbook.
Yes.
Would the commissioners be able to make arrangements with you to be able to view the interactive piece at all?
And the World History textbook?
Yes.
I believe we can give you our demo access that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jeff, I think you want to make a motion. World History textbook.
The textbook itself.
Okay. And Joey, Nick in the second?
Yes.
Are you on the committee?
Oh, I see, yes.
Yes, okay. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Moving down to new business. Does anybody have any new business to come with Board of Education? If not, I will start with information on my right, your left. We will start with City Councilman Kelly. Okay, Commissioner O'Brien?
I just think it's good that the confusion has lessened since Karen Grosso left the board. Commissioner Grosso.
Sugar Man, I guess.
Commissioner Taylor?
No.
Commissioner Bibber?
This is information.
This is information. Commissioner Cagliano? Commissioner Doobie? Commissioner Dantoni?
No.
Commissioner Hens? We'll go the other way for liaison reports. Commissioner Hens? Commissioner Dantoni?
I do want to mention that the May meeting of the Bristol, the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO will meet on May, let's see, I have a little too many notes, on May 14th, which is Tuesday night, and it will be highlighting safety in Bristol Public Schools, addressing some topics of parental concerns, like what will happen if your child's school is evacuated due to an emergency or natural disaster, or if there's a bomb, an active shooter incident near the school. When disaster strikes, how will you be reunited with your child? Javier Rosario, who's our Director of Security and Safety, and will be a special guest speaker, and Pupils Services Director Michael Dieter will share, Dr. Dieter, will share some of the latest data on Bristol Special Education students. The meeting will be held at Chapter 126, Sports and Fitness Center, 47 Upton Street. The public is welcome, and the meeting is free, and childcare is provided by staff of Chapter 126. of Chapter One Two Six.
Yes, so I just want to brag on the fact that the wounded warrior project goal that West Bristol has for getting ten thousand bottles is so close. So if anybody has any redeemable cans or bottles that did not contain alcohol damages, please bring them to West Bristol so that we can use that goal to probably their fundraiser for the warrior project.
Everyone has to turn their bottle.
It's close. Close. I don't agree to keep that.
Commissioner Cagiano?
I have nothing to do with it. There's some cans.
Okay.
Good job.
Commissioner Doobie?
Just briefly, I got a text from the Department of Commerce this morning inviting me to Southside this afternoon, and it was a great visit. The, it was a large group of Bristol Central staff that arrived shortly after I got there. And they come over on a regular basis, and it's all about the future Rams. All of the students at Southside had on ruined colored t-shirts that said, "Future Rams." And the staff members that come from Central after they finish their hard work at Central, they go over to Southside on these days, and they leave to a classroom. It was really inspirational.
And the little mams look like lamb chops.
Yeah.
Commissioner Taylor?
Sure, I just wanted to highlight the career day that my friend Hells had right before April vacation, and just to tell you how well it was hyped and marketed, my seventh grade son, who like most seventh graders, you know, could give or take school, he was not supposed to go to school that morning, and he actually snuck on the bus to get to school because he wanted to get to those workshops. He had a doctor's appointment, and he did, he got on the bus anyway, so yeah, we got him. But, so just that's how well, like, all the kids were completely excited about it. There were people from ESPN, there was EMS, there were dental hygienists, they had skyped with basketball marketing executives, they skyped with MLB players, Malcolm Huckabee, Mr. Johnson, Telkamp beat art teacher, and there's so many different choices they had. They were able to choose where they wanted to go based on their interests, and then they took the second half of the day to learn about resume writing and know how to actually get these jobs when they needed. So he was very excited, which meant I hear the entire school was very, I think it was just middle school, I was still, but it was a very great day for them.
Commissioner Grubowski. Commissioner O'Brien?
I'd rate my power.
Okay. For a year?
Possibly.
City Councilman Kelly.
I just did want to highlight a couple things. One is Cave is having their Summer Leadership Conference down at Waters Edge. They usually bring in a good speaker and talk about some pertinent topic on education, so you're able on August seventh, if anybody else wants to go, you can couple together, I'll probably get out. And then the other thing I'd like to highlight is I was able to attend at Bristol Eastern, their induction ceremony for NHS, as well as at Bristol Central, I attended the breakfast with Dr. Morrow, and then the induction ceremony at Bristol Central, and it's really, you know, uplifting to see that we have a hundred students that meet the criteria of NHS, you know, class of nineteen, class of twenty, and these kids really give us a lot of hope for the success of our future. So kids did a great job during the induction ceremony, and for those of you who haven't gone to a NHS induction ceremony in a while, it's not just scholarship, although scholarship is part of it, it's service, leadership, and character that make one qualified to get into NHS. So I think those two schools represent us very well, and that program, and we're fortunate to have the leadership of those groups in our schools. Don't have anything else to come before us, so we will have a motion to adjourn.
Someone second. All in favor, say aye. We have a motion.